Okay, we're gonna go ahead and begin at seven o'clock.
We're gonna go ahead and begin at seven o'clock. And pursuant to Governor Ron DeSantis, Executive Order Number 20-69 issued on March 20, 2020, municipalities may conduct meetings of their governing boards without having a quorum of its members present physically or in any specific location. They may utilize communications media technology, or CMT, such as telephonic or video conferencing and other technologies as provided by Section 120.45... I'm sorry, let's do that again. 120.545b2 Florida statutes to conduct the meeting and for the public attendance and presentations at the meeting. Accordingly, due to this COVID-19 crisis, the City Council meeting is being held in a modified manner. We are... You can get that one off too, tell people we're in it. There we go, that's a little bit better. Okay, accordingly, due to the COVID-19 crisis, the City Council meeting is being held in a modified manner. We're using CMT pursuant to the governor's orders in order to conduct city business and to help protect the public, city staff, council health and safety and welfare. Additionally, pursuant to the governor's orders pertaining to large gatherings and social distancing and local orders of closure of government buildings, the public is not physically present in City Hall tonight. In a moment, the City Attorney will explain the CMT procedures and adaptations for public attendance and public comment that have been put in place and will be utilized. We have all City Council members here physically in the building tonight, and if you would please rise and join us for the pleasure and invocation.
I didn't write this, but it's... Called a prayer for uncertain times. May we, who are merely inconvenience, remember those whose lives are at stake. May we, who have no risk factors, remember those most vulnerable. May we, who have the luxury of working from home, remember those who must choose between preserving their health and making their rent. May we, who have the flexibility to care for our children when their schools close, remember those who have no options. May we, who have to cancel our trips, remember those who have no safe place to go. May we, who are losing our margin money in the tumult of the economic market, remember those who have no margin at all. May we, who settle in for quarantine at home, remember those who have no home. As fear grips our country, let us choose love. And during this time, when we may not be able to physically wrap our arms around each other, let us yet find ways to be in the loving embrace of God to our neighbors. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I'd like to invite the City Attorney to please state the CMT procedures and adaptations that have been in place and being utilized tonight.
Mayor, I'm glad to see that all seven council members are here, present, so we don't need to have any discussion about quorum being present. So, the public notice that was advertised for this special meeting, this adapted meeting, informed the public of several alternative CMT options to attend this meeting and to submit public comment on a scheduled agenda item and also for the courtesy to the floor portion of the meeting. The notice also informed the public of all the usual information that the City of Jacksonville Beach typically provides on its notice of public meetings. With respect to the public access and attendance accommodations, the city has provided CMT options that provide as follows. The public may attend the live meeting by utilizing the City of Jacksonville Beach YouTube channel. The meeting notice provided the link to our channel. The city has not selected a virtual platform at this point that requires the public to purchase or download any additional software or equipment to watch this meeting, so it was free for the public to log on to YouTube to view this meeting. Comments and chats are disabled. Another option was for the public to attend by listening live by audio using the phone dialing 1-929-205-6099. And instructions were provided that when the meeting ID is requested, they were to enter 912-336677 and press the pound key. There was no participant ID pound for them to utilize, and they would just press pound to continue on to listen. When dialing in by phone, the caller's line will be automatically muted for the duration of the meeting. The hearing or speech impaired should have contacted the agency using Florida Relay Services at 1-800-955-8771 for TTD or 1-800-955-8770 for voice. And all of this information was provided on the public notice and the city's website prior to today's meeting. With respect to public comment accommodations, the city also provided several options to provide public comment on an agenda item or the council's courtesy to the floor portion of this meeting. The public was notified of the option to submit comments on an agenda item or public comment a little later than one business day by U.S. mail to the City Clerk at City Hall at our city address was provided, our city hall address was provided, or also to drop it off physically at the drop box at the main entrance of City Hall. They were also... The public was also provided notice of the option to utilize two other CMT options to submit comments via the email address cityclerk@jaxbchfl.net and also utilize the city's online comment form located on the city's website under the section titled Agenda Minutes, Auto Recording and Live Streaming Videos. There, the public was permitted to submit their comments on any agenda item or the courtesy of the floor portion. The email address and online comment form are going to be remaining... They're going to remain open during the meeting to accept comments and to be read into the public record up until five minutes before any particular agenda item is addressed by the chair. And public comments for courtesy of the floor will be received up until five minutes before the chair opens that portion of the meeting. Courtesy of the floor is initially scheduled to be at a maximum of 15 minutes. Comments received through these CMT options will be read into the record by me, the City Attorney. If an agenda item is being continued or rescheduled, the opportunity to be heard may be at such a later date before the City Council takes final action on that proposition. For all public comments, the member of the public must provide his or her name, his or her address, and which item they wish to speak about. The city provided these instructions in its notice to the public and has published online at the city's website. These public comment options established and provided for by the governor and his emergency executive orders comply with Section 286.0114 and 120.54 Florida statutes. As a conclusion, the city published an agenda as well as... Actually, an amended agenda, as well as included in the notice to the public pursuant to our code and the Florida statutes, each of the items and the topics that will be discussed tonight by the City Council during the meeting. Additionally, the public has been provided several options to provide public comment before and during the meeting and within a reasonable proximity and time before and during the meeting and the particular agenda items. Section 286.0114, 4C Florida statutes specifically authorizes the city to prescribe procedures and forms for an individual to use in order to inform the council of a desire to be heard to indicate his or her support, opposition, or neutrality on a proposition. The city, through its public comment options that I've described above, have... Has provided different procedures and forms to indicate, among other things, his or her support, opposition, or neutrality on items and topics to be discussed at the meeting tonight. The city provided information to the public on how to submit comments on its notice and its dedicated webpage. With respect to designating a specific period of time for public comment, the Florida statutes 286.0114, 4D, authorized the city to designate that period. All comments that were submitted by the public will be included as part of the public record for this meeting and will be considered by the City Council prior to any action taken. A video of this meeting may be requested at the clerk's office and, of course, viewed online at YouTube. And Mayor, thank you very much. I'm sorry that was lengthy, but I think it was important that we at least get that on the record for this very unique experience.
I certainly agree. Thanks very much. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna call a meeting. Madam Park, will you roll call, please?
Councilor Doherty.
Here.
Councilor Devant.
Here.
Councilor Golding.
Here.
Councilor Hoffman.
Here.
Councilor Nichols.
Here.
Councilor Volosang.
Here.
Mayor Latham.
Here. Item 20071, please.
I move that we approve the minutes of the council briefing held on March 2, 2020.
Say.
Motion second, Ms. Golding.
I'd like to propose an amendment to the briefing minutes. In the discussion about the deck-to-chairs contract, Ms. Hoffman had requested accounting of the in-kind and hard contributions made by the city towards deck chairs. That was not included in our minutes, and I think it's an important piece of our discussion, and I hope that we could include that so that we can make sure that that is an actual item that gets followed through. Second.
Okay, we got a motion in second. Is there a further discussion from the council? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? By your action, motion carries. Okay, back to the original minutes. Is there any other amendments or scrupulous areas? Okay, in that case, I'm looking for a motion to accept the minutes. We do have a motion. Okay, thank you. Any additional discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? By your action, motion carries. And moving on to the regular council meeting, the 7-2.
I move that we accept the minutes at the regular council meeting held on March 2, 2020.
Second.
Got a motion second. Any discussion from the council? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? By your action, motion carries. Any announcements to that? That's all the questions, isn't it? And we're gonna speak? Okay, I'll speak. Oh, Ms. Golding wants to speak.
I'll just say thank you to everyone in the city who has taken on this very challenging time and task to deal with the things that we're dealing with. I know that everybody has been dealing with a lot, especially with trying to deal with people working from home and get people set up to work from home and setting up this meeting. And the police department as well, because I know that I've had some citizens who've had some issues, and they've followed up on the one particular incident where there was concern about more than 10 people gathering. So, I just want to thank all of our first responders and everyone in the city who's taking care of us and ensuring that we stay as safe and healthy as possible. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. And I'm gonna take... I also want to thank the city and the staff and everything that you've done, but I want to turn the tables too and thank our citizens for bearing with us while we go through a pretty difficult and unusual circumstance. Not in our lifetimes has anybody suffered through a global pandemic before, and it's surreal. But it's also untested waters. I think we're moving forward in good spirit to do the right things for the right reasons. And I appreciate the citizen's support. I know that we're not making everybody happy with some of the decisions, but I can assure you with complete confidence that all decisions are based on what's best for the safety of our citizens. Okay? So, we're ahead and moving forward to courtesy of the floor, and I believe you've got a few over there, City Attorney.
Yes, sir, we have a few submissions from the public. So, I'll be reading submissions received at the clerk's office with respect to the courtesy of the floor portion. The first one is from Casey Jones, 13150 Yama Sea Trail. Mr. Jones submitted, "I would like to check on all the illegal lights that are on the shoreline at the beach. Have all of the illegal parking lots end zone been changed out yet? If not, what is the completion date? Any update on the new sea turtle lighting ordinance? Thank you for taking my questions." Just to step outside of that in my capacity as the City Attorney, I do have some answers to that at any time you want me to provide information, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like.
If you want an answer now, go ahead.
I sure will. So, prior to the crisis, I had prepared a very substantial sea turtle protection ordinance, which I hope that the council will be proud of, but of course, this crisis sidetracked the submission of that. So, we would have had that brought to the council, actually, I think either the last original scheduled council meeting for March or this one, but we tried to narrow down the topics for the council to... Because of the crisis, because of all the different things we were facing. But that sea turtle protection lighting ordinance is drafted and is ready for council's review when we can get to it.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. You got a couple more?
Another courtesy of the floor submission comes from Stephen Fitzgerald, 1107 First Street South Unit K, Jacksonville Beach. Mayor Latham, the following beach activities, restrictions, and fines should be implemented as soon as possible. I believe these changes will help reduce the spread of COVID-19. Public awareness, rational debate, and deepening concern for surrounding effects from this pandemic has caused other Florida counties to rethink total beach closures. Here are my thoughts. One, open the beaches or whatever future limited services are required, so the community has a comprehensive list of where we can go to spend money at our local businesses. List would need to require hours and days of operation as well. The responsibility of providing updated information can come from businesses as future situation changes. I would be glad to offer up any services you might need help to compile such a list. I believe it is incumbent for all of us to work together to help keep our locals employed and our businesses open. Thank you for all your efforts. Stay healthy and stay safe.
Thank you, sir. And Madam Park, did we get live streaming back?
I didn't hear you.
Okay. We had a momentary drop in live streaming. It was during the reading of this courtesy of the floor. Do you want to reread it?
Absolutely.
Okay. And can we verify we're back up first, so I don't waste your time?
I'm gonna go check.
Thank you. Just take a momentary break.
That's something I haven't had for five weeks.
A momentary pause.
I have a momentary pause.
A lot of us can relate to that.
You guys look good. It's that side.
You got all the good sides fixed now.
We're gonna have to read it all again.
Re-read it again?
All of it.
We're gonna have to start with Casey Jones again.
Oh.
Sorry.
You mean another drink of water?
No. So, this will be my second reading of the submissions for courtesy of the floor. There may have been a technical error upon my first reading. First submission comes from Casey Jones, address 13150 Yama Sea Trail. Mr. Jones submits, "I would like to check on all the illegal lights that are on our shoreline at the beach. Has all the illegal parking lots end zone been changed out yet? If not, what is the completion date? Any update on the new sea turtle lighting ordinance? Thank you for taking my questions." Mr. Mayor, before you... Hey, you had... Okay. So, as City Attorney, I can update Mr. Jones and the council that prior to the crisis emergency that we're confronted with, I did draft a substantial sea turtle lighting protection ordinance. It was scheduled to be submitted to the council, but due to the crisis and some modifications and changes that we had to make, it's not before the council yet, but it is drafted and ready, and I've reviewed it with several agencies and authorities and also with beaches and parks and police force. So, that will be submitted to council very soon. Another courtesy of the floor submission comes from Dylan Silverman, and I had previously announced that Mr. Silverman didn't provide his address, but the mayor allowed for his submission to be read in full. Mr. Silverman submits, "Hi, I would like to submit a comment on the beach closures throughout the beaches of Jacksonville. I am concerned that the complete closure of the beaches is unwarranted and unwanted. Now, I am completely in support of the social distancing guidelines, such as individuals must be six feet apart and in a group no larger than 10. I think that following these guidelines should open up the beaches for exercise activities such as walking, running, swimming, and surfing, thus leaving the beach closed for all other activities. There are many other counties throughout the East Coast, such as Brevard and Volusia, and they have obtained good results because of this. They say there might be some correlation to the virus being in sunlight and not being able to survive very long. This is something to seriously consider. Thank you for your time." Another submission comes from Stephen Fitzgerald, 1107 First Street, South Unit K, Jacksonville Beach. Mayor Latham, the following beach activities, restrictions, and fines should be implemented as soon as possible. I believe these changes will help reduce the spread of COVID-19. Public awareness, rational debate, and deepening concern for surrounding effects from this pandemic has caused other Florida counties to rethink total beach closures. Here are my thoughts. One, open the beach to healthy quote movement unquote activities, running, walking, surfing, biking, swimming. Two, no greater than 10 people together in one group. Three, all activities on the beach must abide by the six-foot minimum personal distance. Four, everyone on the beach must carry a valid picture ID or will be told to leave the beach. Police officers can randomly ask for IDs. Five, police officers have the authority to write tickets for violations, $500 per violation. Thoughtful and judicious use of our beach will help pull people out of confined spaces where viruses tend to spread. It will also help to relieve dangerous peripheral effects we are now starting to experience, such as anxiety, depression, and physical decline. I believe the people of Jacksonville Beach will wholeheartedly embrace these beach rules and will successfully quote self-regulate unquote with the help of law enforcement. Let's start using the beach as a healthy tool in battling this virus." The final public comment we have is from Mr. Ken Marsh, 2011 Gale Avenue, Jacksonville Beach. Mr. Marsh submits, "I commend and appreciate the efforts of all those in leadership positions during this crisis, certainly a trying time for all. I would like to offer two suggestions to you as an effort to assist citizens and community in further dealing with this crisis. First, all health experts have said that testing, contact tracing, and following the prescribed guidelines are all essential to flattening the curve. I have been unable to find out who or what specific agency is in charge of the contact tracing protocol within our beaches community. Can someone investigate and advise the community who is in charge of contact tracing process and the extent that process is being followed? Secondly, as the curve flattens and descends, no one knows the severity of the economy or how long the normalization process will take before we begin to see our restaurant and hospitality network return. For my email last week, in an effort to minimize the impacts of layoffs or closures within this network, I would recommend that community be... I'm sorry, I would recommend that community be provided a list of all local food establishments that offer carryout services or whatever future limited services are required, so the community has a comprehensive list of where we can go to spend money at our local businesses. The list would need to require hours and days of operation as well. The responsibility of providing updated information can come from businesses as future situations change. I would be glad to offer up any services you might need to help compile such a list. I believe it is incumbent for all of us to work together to keep... To help keep our locals employed and businesses open. Thank you all for your efforts. Stay safe and stay healthy."
That should do it, right?
Yeah.
Ashley, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to Agenda 20-073.
I move that we accept the monthly financial reports for the month of February 2020.
Say.
Motion second. Any discussion from the council? City manager, do you have anything to add?
I do not.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. These tags are messing me up a little bit. Go ahead, Dan, let's do mine.
I just had a quick question for Ashley with the projections. Can you hit that one? Mine's on. Anyways, hello. Do you have any projections for what this pandemic impact is going to be on the third quarter? I know that's kind of... I'm asking you a big question, but you know the numbers. So, I'm just like, we're going to be making decisions before we get the final third quarter number, so I'd just like to know a little bit of your feeling based off of our revenues and our expenses as to where we'd be before we make any kind of financial decisions. Thank you.
Ashley Gossett, CFO. It's kind of difficult to ask... To answer your question right now because we're right in it. We have not finalized the March numbers, and I think that's when we'll start to see kind of any changes. Our sales tax revenue, that's given to us a month in arrears, and convention development tax revenues, those are given to us two months in arrears. So, we're still a couple months away from really feeling the impacts of the environment we're in. We are expecting a significant decline, but as of right now, I'm not sure I can quantify that for you.
Thank you.
We're closely monitoring.
And could you just... Just a mic. I can't unmute this.
That one's...
That's very soft. Did you hear it? Okay. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Could we get an update for the golf course, too, on how this is going to happen?
A little bit of questions. Hi, personal office, manager of golf course. I'm just saying that our numbers are really good. It's been... Now, there's a lot of private clubs that are closed down right now, and the safety measures I think we've taken are good enough to make 270 people come out almost on the daily basis. So, every safety measure that we've taken so far leaves us so... We're 100% touchless. You can book it two times online, you can pay online, you can pay over the phone. Everything, as you know, as far as the starters, they hope you just walk up to your starters, no papers to give or receipts, nothing to touch, no pins, no cups, no rates now, as of a couple days ago, no scorecards and no bets. So, we got a little bit of feedback from some customers, but for the most part, it's all been very well received.
And for the carts themselves, wiping them down?
Yes, we've got big sprayers to after every... After they come in before they go out, visibly in front of the customer, we can wipe them all down.
Great.
Okay, we got a motion in the second on the floor. Is there any additional discussion from the council? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilor Doherty.
Yes.
Councilor Devant.
Yes.
Councilor Golding.
Yes.
Councilor Hoffman.
Yes.
Councilor Nichols.
Yes.
Councilor Volosang.
Yes.
Mayor Latham.
Yes.
Yes. Too many buttons, not enough sound. Okay, is the city prepared to present... I don't know what your plan is for the comprehensive audit. Are you going to take a minute to describe what you're inspired before we take a motion?
We'll just give a... We'll just give a very brief summary. Every year, the city is required to have a consolidated annual financial report performed, also referred to as the CAFR. In previous years, the typical practice would have been to have the auditors come and actually attend a briefing with council for 20 to 30 minutes and make a presentation to you about the process that they used and the findings that they had. Given the shutdown of nonessential travel and the ability to do so, we're planning on doing that meeting with council in arrears. We'll do it at some point in the future when the auditors are comfortable coming over here and are comfortable having an in-course in the briefing, so to speak. With that being said, we did send out the CAFR document to the council a couple weeks in advance in the hopes that you had an opportunity to look through it. As the agenda memo stipulates, we did receive an unqualified audit opinion on our annual financial report. The auditors found no major deficiencies in internal controls or compliance violations of any laws or regulations. At this point, we are looking for the council to go ahead and adopt the CAFR. Ashley Gossett, our CFO, is here. Do you have any specific questions for her? Our goal would be that at some point... at some point in the coming months, we would have the auditors come back in for a briefing and actually walk you through the findings that they have.
Thank you, sir. I mean, I do have a few questions, but I can certainly wait. They aren't that critical. I mean, is there anybody else who would like to ask any questions to Ashley before we...
You need the motion first.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I move that we accept the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2019.
Second.
Yeah, we got a motion in a second. Ms. Dunlop?
Thank you. Hi, Ashley. Given all the information that they did in the audit and that we have a lot of new management, a lot of processes and systems because of the new people within the city, is there any big takeaways they took from this report or how you can improve any processes or systems or like that or anything like that?
As the city manager stated, we did get an unqualified opinion, which is we are objected with an audit. Our financial statements were found to be materially correctly stated. To answer your question, we did note some processes that need an improvement, one of which was bank reconciliations. We had a delay in completing them for the fiscal year, and it's largely due to a new ERP system and a change in staff. We have since developed a process to work within our new system, and we are bringing them current. And you'll see in the back of the CAFRA, there's a note from the auditors in our response and saying our objective is to have them reconcile by the 20th day following the month ending. A second item that they noted was with our work order, our job costing fixed asset system. We had a delay in closing some of those projects again because we had a kind of big shift in staff and the new ERP system that requires us to do a little bit of dual entry because that one exists in our previous system. So yes, we noted some things that definitely can be approved for the year coming, but neither of which caused a misstatement in our financials. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Hoffman?
And I apologize if it's in there. Probably is, but I couldn't readily find it. Do we still have any outstanding money due from the past two hurricanes from FEMA, and if so has it been accounted for?
So again, it's back in the audit. We have a single audit section. To date, as of today, we are largely recovered from both storms. I think we have Matthew, we are fully recovered at this point, and Arnold, we have maybe less than a tenth of the funds that we were eligible for still outstanding. We saw an extreme influx in the last month. They did release a lot of funds to us.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Do we take a motion on this already? Okay. Mayor Quirk, will you roll call please?
Councilmember Devant?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogelsang?
Yes.
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Mayor Latham?
Yes. And is the staff with your brief, Hour Number 75?
Yes, just...
Yes, quick update for city council. The city has been approached by the current tenants at the Golf Course Restaurant, seeking to do an assignment of lease, and the two parties have voluntarily entered into that agreement. However, the lease agreement, the way it's structured, requires that the city sign off on any assignment of lease before that assignment actually happened. The party that they are looking to assign the lease to is known as T...
Pennman Hospitality.
Thank you. Pennman Hospitality, which is basically a subsidiary of Sneakers. They're looking to open up a new restaurant called Sneakers on the Green, which would be that restaurant entity. Both Director Fatidis as well as the Golf Course Superintendent Bruce Mallor are here. If you have any specific questions for them about the conversion from one food service delivery to another. The date that they are looking for this to be effective is tomorrow. And we also have, we also have a comment from the company as well.
Thank you, sir. And let's take a motion before we head to Florida council.
I move that we approve the assignment and assumption of commercial lease agreement of the Golf Course Restaurant lease from T. Green Partners LLC, doing business as Santra Bar and Grill, to Pennman Hospitality LLC, doing business as Sneakers on the Green, as described in the memorandum from the Golf Course Facility Manager dated March 6, 2020.
Second.
And a motion in a second. Ms. Golding?
I have a couple of questions. I don't know who would be the appropriate person to answer, but first of all, in light of the COVID-19 situation, is there going to be any food service provided by Sneakers on the Green? And secondly, are we looking at any rent adjustments because of this situation?
Great questions. Bruce, also the manager here. Let me back up a little bit to answer your question. As far as they go, we did remove all chairs, tables, anything from the outside. So it is their responsibility, but we went ahead and removed everything from within our stores. There is nowhere for anyone to intervene after that. I'm permitted.
Did you let the mic go?
Yeah. Okay, let's start over again. I'm sorry. Your question?
So I was wondering if they were going to be able to do anything right away as far as food service? And secondly, is there going to be any adjustment on their rent?
So the food service, we've got a window that people can just walk out to right now. We've got a number of things in the works. Keith knows that the GPS that we've got in the carts has the ability to order from the GPS itself. So I'm working on that here this week to get that activated. So customers can, you know, that's also something we can spray down after every transaction. They can order on the screen and then come by and pick it up. And the food operator cooperation window, Part 57, ordered a hot dog and coke and fries. So that's through the pickup window. It's working fairly well for them. Other than that, we're hoping to get this thing started tomorrow morning. Following council meeting tonight, we'd like to get the paperwork signed.
Are you done, Ms. Golding? Can you wait just one second? Let's sort of focus on this next.
I think, I just think it's a good opportunity to let them get their feet wet for the latter part of this lease. It's just my thoughts on it because we know that it really wasn't running smoothly with the current operators. And then we would have the option, cancel the lease and start a new one. And then what if it doesn't work the way we want it to work? I think this is an opportunity for them to get their feet wet, see if it's something they even want to continue, but also let us evaluate, kind of like a pilot program, if you will. So I think it's a good opportunity for both parties. So I'll be supporting it for that reason.
Yeah, we haven't made any official rent decrease or anything yet. You know, we're going to get the paperwork signed hopefully tonight and then discuss that. We haven't upgraded it yet.
Mr. Smith, office?
Yes, I do.
Yes, I want to let the council know that we've not discussed the lowering of the rent at this point in time. The intention is exactly as Councilmember Vogelsang said, which is they will finish out the lease, this initial lease term. However, when it comes time to renegotiate that lease term, there may be concessions on both sides based on how they've been operating up to that point in time. I would also like to point out to council that we actually have a number of leases throughout the city. We have food service. We have the industrial park. We have telecommunications, et cetera. We are starting to hear from some of those businesses that they are looking for rent relief, and we will be bringing an item back for you, hopefully adding future briefings for us to talk about what some of those financial relief options are for our tenants in multiple ways, shapes, and forms.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Doherty?
Thank you. The lease, I know we're partially through this. Lease was expired next year, as of April 2021, or September. But in future, I would like to put in some protection for the city on these leases because I feel we were let down by T. Green. I mean, they came in here and told us that we're going to be fantastic and we're not helping. So I think it was easy. There wasn't really any default there for them. There wasn't really anything hanging over them to actually push them. And I think in this line of work, you can easily get interrupted. We're providing everything you said we would. You're providing a lot of golfers. By the way, I'm glad I didn't bat you last week, but I said we're 90% sure that you're going to close.
You said 90%.
I did say 90%. But yeah, who knows that golf courses are essential to life? I'm glad they are. But yeah, I mean, why we're giving them golfers and planet business, there's no reason why even an average operator should not succeed at this, in this line of work. But I would like to see the city proactive so we're not held loose again.
Well, I think we'll work with Chris. That's okay if I, yeah, come on over first for next year when the first term ends. We'd like to basically start with an all-new lease that involves maybe some sort of revenue share opportunity. Like right now, we're down, we're not down, but you know, if we have a hurricane, we'll close down in two weeks. So there's something to help us work together as a business group. It's not just us collecting rent and not caring about anything that they helped do properly. So we plan on revisiting everything all together and kind of starting a brand-new fresh, I'll go first. And they're aware of this and they're on board with it.
Yeah, the original contract is very friendly to the operator. I mean, I think we've went above and beyond looking after them, but they need to reciprocate. And I mean, I have faith that Greg and Sneakers will do a good job. But you know, further on the online fee sales business, et cetera, et cetera, we want to protect it so there's no interruption of service. And it's not more addicts for the operator. Thank you.
Does you have anything to add? Mr. Ambrose?
Well, in response to Councilmember Doherty, yes, we've already started to discuss performance expectations and requirements provisions. It'll be much more substantial than the current lease, and then it'll give this, it'll enable the city to make some changes if those expectations and requirements aren't met. We'll have those more explicitly laid out in the future. And then in addition to that, I have a comment from the Sneakers Company, if you'd like me, whenever you'd like me to read that.
Good.
It is three short paragraphs.
Good.
Okay. So this, this is submitted by Greg Pratt on behalf of Sneakers. "Thank you for considering Sneakers Sports Grill to operate the food and beverages at Jack's Beach Golf Club. Sneakers is and has been locally owned and operated for over 23 years. We hope to name our operation Sneakers on the Green, and we feel that this opportunity could be very positive for the golfers, the city, and our restaurant. Sneakers is uniquely qualified to be successful at this task, given the close proximity to our full-service restaurant and all of its resources, our large amount of highly qualified staff, and our ability to buy and prep fresh food in bulk, our long-term understanding of reasonable alcohol sales, and our comprehension of safe food service practices will serve us well in this endeavor. Additionally, we feel that our restaurant will act as an asset for the golf course. We will work hand-in-hand with the course to utilize our current location for large groups that cannot be accommodated at the course. This will help the course in procuring much larger groups for tournaments, as well as significantly helping the restaurant. Thank you for considering us. We promise to work extremely hard and make you and the residents of Jack's Beach proud."
Thank you, sir. Okay, did we do a motion on this one yet?
Hi.
Okay, Ms. Hoffman?
I just wanted to echo some of the other comments and say that I'm really glad that this is working out to this point and that we have a little bit of a runway to see if it's really mutually beneficial partnership. I don't see any reason why it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, especially with the reasons that Mr. Pratt said. He's been in this town a long time, and he's been, I think, a good, a good business operator and a good partner to the city. So hopefully, I know initially you guys were looking for a local partnership a couple iterations ago. So I really do hope for the best with this and that he brings everything to the table that he says he's going to, and that we do too.
Thank you.
Thank you, man. Mr. Nichols?
As for the rent reduction, these small businesses have an opportunity to get the small business loans, and those are going to be forgiven. So when you're talking about reducing rent, keep that in mind that, that all of their rent payments have the ability to be forgiven through this time. So I don't, if they're going to get reimbursed, I mean, so you should still be collecting the rent necessary.
Okay, anyone else? I'll just add that consistent with everybody else, Sneakers have been around a long time, done some great things for the community, and survived some pretty difficult times. So I think they've shown some good staying power. Greg's a great guy, and he'll set up a great operation, and I'll certainly support this motion. Any other comments? Mayor Quirk, will you roll call please?
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogelsang?
Yes.
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Devant?
Yes.
Mayor Latham?
Yes. Is the city prepared to address Item Number 76?
Yes. Item Number 76 is for consideration of the city council on whether or not to add one additional day to the Great Atlantic Music Festival. As many people are aware, Spring in the Blues, which is one of the City of Jack's Beach's signature events, was canceled this April. The promotional company that puts that on Jack's Beach festivals has a second festival that they have later in the year, referred to as the Great Atlantic Music Festival. That event is typically held on one day. There is a request from the promoter that adding a second day be considered to add on to it, to basically make it a larger event and have it take the place of Spring in the Blues as the signature event for the year. After conversations with the city attorney, this is not something that can be done administratively. The consideration needs to go in front of city council, as it would effectively be a one-time exception to the city's special events policy. And with that, we're available for any questions you might have. We have Director Fatidis for Parks and Recreation and the city attorney here.
Thank you, sir. And we're going to take a motion.
I move that we approve a one-time exception to the special events policy to allow the Great Atlantic Music Festival to add one additional day, June 14th, to the event currently scheduled on June 13th, 2020.
Second.
Can I motion a second? Mr. Doherty?
Yeah, I have a question for the chief regarding, this time is a high-volume time for your officers. By adding another day, is that going to create any issues regarding like staffing or?
I don't know. Only Chief Paul Smith, Chief of Police, I'm not sure because I just don't know the dynamics of coming out of this crisis. That's the independent variable here, that I don't know what's going to happen. Usually, we'd be busy, and it would be another day of being busy. It's certainly not going to kill us to do it. I just don't know what's going to come, when, and if this thing lifts. If it's a weekend before or the day before, it could be pretty intense. I don't have a major problem with the concept. It's just my feeling. I don't think it's going to hurt anything in the grand scheme of things.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments from the council? I just, excuse me, that, you know, there's a lot of negative that took place because of this pandemic, and this was one of those things. And I'm not a big proponent of extending the festivals, but in this case, I think it's warranted, particularly since it's its 30th anniversary, the Spring in the Blues 30th anniversary. It would be good, I think, to extend the gesture, make a one-time exception. And is that you?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Dunlop?
Sorry about that. This is a question for the city manager. I'm not asking it before. I apologize before, like you completely intended. When this pandemic does start to lift, we've, you and I have discussed how the city will slowly be easing up on like beach restrictions and things such as that. How, is there a process that the council is going to be involved in, or is it going to be administrative on how you choose to start rolling out the larger events? How much time are we going to wait until it lifts and we kind of get the all clear, but not completely all clear? If you look at what happened in Japan, it was a nice downward trend. They opened up the schools, and now they are, they're worried about the second hill. So what are your thoughts on how we're going to be doing that and how it's going to impact festivals and all of the other events downtown?
My thoughts on that are that as we saw what unfolded over the last two to three weeks, this is not an emergency event where the City of Jacksonville Beach is in a vacuum. We are not isolated. We do not control our own destiny. We are controlled in part by all of our surrounding neighbors, Duval County, the state of Florida, and to an extent, the entire nation. So I think that as a country, we need to get to a point where at the federal level, restrictions start to come back down, at the state level, restrictions start to come back down, and then in unison with our neighbors, we start to see the ability to reduce some restrictions and gradually put this back in place. I can't tell you what they would look like because I've never been through a pandemic before. I don't know at what point Governor DeSantis says, "I'm extending my executive order, but I'm making some amendments." but I'm making some amendments to it with ease up of restrictions." And it will be for a two-week window, or a one-week window, or a three-day window. I just, I, I don't know. I think we're all in that position of, I don't know. As Chief Smith indicated, we may not see a lifting of some of the restrictions until right before this event is scheduled. And I dare say, there's also the possibility that the restrictions may go past this date. We don't know. So it's one thing to plan for a possible future event, but there's always the possibility that future events may continue to be canceled beyond the April 30th date.
I guess more of my question was around, do you have a mindset of, let's say it gets lifted on the weekend before, a week later, do we just start having the events again? Or do you want to peter in the events slowly over time? Because that would be, that's more of an administrative, so once the governor lets you do stuff?
And again, it, it comes down to what our neighbors are doing. A great conversation I had with Chief Smith earlier today is that if there were things that were to be relieved in our community, we would not want to do that without the same relief being provided in neighboring communities. Because the last thing you want to see is a flood within this community, because that's where the asset is available. Great example, the City of Jacksonville has closed all of their parks. Our parks are still open. At some point, we would hope that Jacksonville would open their parks to potentially relieve stress off of our parks. There's that type of forethought that we have to be thinking of, but I, I can't speculate on every possibility that's out there. The, the goal would be to do a more gradual introduction, as opposed to a potential cliff where you end up with a situation like your hand.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Vogelsang?
I guess if we approve this and we're, like Ms. Demont said, it opened, had just opened up a week prior, legally, we'd be obligated to give them two days, but we may not want to give them two days. Because we don't want to have a two-day festival of 3,000 people in our downtown if the sanctions were just lifted. So is there a caveat that we could do on this vote that gives you some administrative power to say yes or no, given the governor's decision on opening things back up? Can we grant you some authority in, in that?
Mr. Ambrose?
Yes, sir. In, in line with, actually with the comprehensive emergency management plan, you, you can amend this vote, this motion, to provide the city manager with discretion on whether to make adjustments on the two-day event to prevent it from going forward if the crisis and the situation calls for it, governor's orders call for it. You can provide the city manager with specific authority over this particular item, whether to control that, you know, going forward or not. Right in line with our comprehensive emergency management plan to have the city manager with that operational authority.
Based on that, I propose an amendment that allows Mr. Stapopoulos the discretion of allowing the second day, with the understanding that if there is an all-clear, we do support it, assuming that the times are right for it. And so I, I, I'm okay with him having that authority. First off, it's a one-time exception, so we'd be doing Mr. Beal a favor either way. But obviously, our city safety and our police department, we don't know what state they're going to be in as far as enforcement goes. So I'm comfortable with Mr. Stapopoulos taking that decision. So my friendly amendment would be, I make a motion that we grant Mr. Stapopoulos the ability to determine whether a second day is permissible.
Second.
Can I motion a second? Let's go ahead and open for discussion on the motion. Anybody? Okay, Mr. Stapopoulos?
Just a suggestion that, that council might want to consider. Because obviously, we, we don't know when restrictions might be lifted. We could always put a caveat in the approval that it, that if the restrictions are not lifted by a date certain, that the approval of the second day is denied. And we could set that potentially two to three weeks in advance of that event. And if we do not have full list, full lifting of all restrictions, the second day is not added to it. Just wanted to throw that out as a possible option.
Okay, Mr. Demont? Oh, Mr. Nichols?
I guess my concern is that if it's a, if it's getting close to it and we're denying it at the last minute, there's a lot of cost involved with the artist. Are we going to have some exposure if it's not a, a, if we're still not under restrictions from the state? And if it just comes to you and you go, I just don't feel like it's a good, a good idea what kind of level of exposure we have to repay the event, the event and help it with their costs.
And that's why I think I, my preference is for a date certain.
I, I would agree with that. Based on that discussion, I will draw my amendment and just make a proposal. And a new motion will be that all restrictions must be lifted at least three weeks prior to the scheduled event date for the second day to go forward.
First off, first motion was withdrawn, now we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Yes, second.
Can I get a motion second up in the floor for discussion, Ms. Hoffman?
As someone who's had to cancel and postpone events, none to the scale that, that Mr. Beal's had to do, I think what we saw was a ratcheting down of the size of events. You're 500 and then you're 50 and then you're 10. I don't think there's going to be, and I don't know, this is my first pandemic too, that there's going to be like a whistle and an all-clear, everyone back in the pool. I think that it's going to probably be scaled back up to such as a point where if we're still in that, in that kind of dangerous zone, why would we have it at all? You know, it's one day versus two days. You know, and I mean, I think that would be up to the city. They, they, the City of Jacksonville Beach in concert with Jacksonville canceled all of their scheduled events and Spring in the Blues was one of them. So I would think it would be based on the executive order, whether they were able to do the event at all. And if they are allowed to do the event at that time, then one day versus two days, I don't, I don't see how that matters. It's still a lot of people in a, in a small area downtown. I, I support giving Sam the second day on this event. With the caveats of, obviously, we need to be in a position as a city to even be allowing that special event in the first place. If we're not in a position to be allowing that special event, whether it's because of the executive order or what have you, then, then it wouldn't happen anyway, one day or two. So if we allow two days, then wouldn't that kind of take care of itself?
Good, Ms. Vogelsang?
I don't think it takes care of itself in that if, if it was just lifted a week prior and let's say it was slowly being ratcheted up 1,000 people, do we need two back-to-back thousand days, or should we just have one day? That's why I don't... We're bringing a concert to our downtown and having anybody that wants to come, not just our local residents, but people across the ditch and everybody come and hang out. Do we want that for one day or two days if this was just lifted? Let's say it just changed the day before from 500 to 1,000.
It's very hypothetical.
It is, it's hypothetical, but also asking for a second day while we're in the middle of a pandemic is pretty hypothetical to me too. I don't like, we, we, we're in a bubble, we've never been through this before. So to ask for a second day during a pandemic, we have no clue where we're going to be in two months, seems a little off-putting to me, but that's just my thoughts on it. And I'm trying to throw Sam a bone, with the understanding it doesn't put our residents in jeopardy or we start to lift the curve again, we're just adding to that by having another day. So if we're on the way out and the curve stops May 15th, like it's supposed to, and we hit our peak May 15th and we're going down, then probably it's appropriate, I would think, the governor lifts restrictions enough that we'd be appropriate to have a second day. But if we're still going, end of May, and then he starts to lift it, I don't think we should have a two-day event. So that's where I think the caveat should be in place, that if it hasn't been rolled out enough, then we shouldn't have the second day. We can, he can still have the first day, let's say it's 1,000 people. On June 13th, Governor DeSantis is allowing 1,000 people in May. Well, then he can have one day if he wants to have one day. But in my opinion, I don't think he should have two days. If we're still under a pandemic, still social distancing to an extent, or smaller groups, not any, not freedom to do whatever we want, I don't think we need to be having a two-day music festival in downtown, that's just my thought.
I would think that if we're still in a pandemic, we're still under state of emergency and that grants the authority of the city manager and myself to discuss termination of any event. So I'm, that's just, I'm just throwing that out. Mr. Ambrose?
Mayor, if... Mayor, if, if we do put a date certain, if the council were to vote for a date certain as to what, the date that this decision will be made, whether the, the two-day event is going to go forward or not, then that may help the promoter as well in his dealings with the many different parties and entities that are involved in such a large event. They can include that in their contracts and agreements as they drop that date, so that they have the understanding between the business relationship, that that's going to be the date for them to decide whether the travel arrangement should go forward, the business dealings should go forward and vice versa, or, or not. So it may, it may greatly benefit all those other parties that are involved in producing that event as well.
Thank you. Mr. Doherty?
Yeah, everybody makes good points. I was actually going to bring up what you said, Chris, and follow from what you said, Mike. It should be a mutually beneficial agreement. Because we don't want somebody trying to organize a festival in a week. You're going to get poorer publicity, you're going to get poorer entertainment. It's not going to be set up the right way. So I think Sam would probably appreciate us giving him minimum two, probably three weeks of notice whether he's going to go ahead or not. I'm, I don't really care about the second day. I mean, I think people at that stage are going to want to get out of the house anyway, so we'll give them something to do. But only if it's not going to create strain on the city, the admin staff and the police department. And I think Sam would understand that too. So if, if you're comfortable with three weeks or two weeks, whatever you think you would need in order to get our house in order, where it's not going to be problematic, but it's on, I, I think I can support that. That we have the definitive time, cut off time. That's it, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Demont?
Thank you. Mine is just clarification on the amendment. When you said when the executive order is lifted or when the, the pandemic, from the governor, from the, the, from Curry, from our... Who's, who's lifting? There are multiple levels that are lifting and pushing down and putting out, do this, don't do this. Less so from the federal government, but a lot from the state and local governments. Which one are we focusing on, or if it's in unison? So I just need clarity on whose order you're talking about.
I would say, yeah, I would say all, we have to abide by all three. So I, I would say everyone's orders.
So there's no states of emergencies?
We're not allowed to be more restrictive than what Governor DeSantis puts out anyway.
On this record, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's, it's going to move in the exact opposite directions to before. The governor, the president made his declarations, the governor made his. And then Curry, Mayor Curry, Brown, and Glasser and I all got together for the third piece. And it's basically going to have to happen the same way to bring this still closed. Settle?
I just wanted to make sure it's clear.
Okay, Mr. Nichols?
So the clarification should be that it's going to be that the city has to be lifted? Because you're the last, we're the last one that's going to lift.
Correct. Do you agree? Mr. Stapopoulos?
Correct. Correct. We're, we're basically saying that the state of emergency would need to be lifted at the state, county, and local levels. Okay?
Come on, JP.
Thank you, Jean Paul Smith, Chief of Police. Just my thoughts, and it might help clarify. I stopped answering hypothetical questions three weeks ago. I, I don't answer them because there's so many things in play. I feel it's a waste of time to answer hypotheticals. I think so many things have changed in the past 10 days or two weeks. We don't know where, where we're going to be two weeks from now. It could be substantially worse, it could be better. And just me personally, talking about a two-day festival or a one-day festival in June, when there's 11,000 people that have died from this and we are looking at the apex in seven or eight days and we don't know what the future's going to bring. My personal opinion is this is meeting is not the time or place to make this decision on a relatively small issue in the grand scheme of things. If I could suggest maybe push for two weeks and maybe we'll have a clearer indication of where this is going. I, I, I just don't think, we all have bigger things to worry about now, at least the police department does. I can't answer your question about June, whether it'll affect us or not. I just don't have enough information. It's a guess. And I think we're all guessing. And like I said, we haven't even apexed yet in this state. But that's just my thoughts, if it helps. Thank you.
Nice, JP. Now, do you want to restate your motion for the clerk? She was a little bit confused after discussion.
My motion would be that the state of emergency must be lifted with at least three weeks prior to the scheduled event for the second day to be approved.
Okay, and is that your motion stand? Just a second. Is there any other discussion about this? You're not in class. Okay. Now, seeing any interaction around, okay, Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call on the motion, please?
Councilor Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilor Nichols?
Yes.
Councilor Vogelsang?
Yes.
Councilor Doherty?
Yes.
Councilor Demont?
Yes.
Councilor Golding?
Yes.
Mayor Layton?
Yes. Now we're back to the original motion. Is there any further discussion on the original motion? Which is, one minute, two, now that we have the caveat. Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilor Nichols?
Yes.
Councilor Vogelsang?
Yes.
Councilor Doherty?
Yes.
Councilor Demont?
Yes.
Councilor Golding?
Yes.
Councilor Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Layton?
Yes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, can we please read Resolution Number 2057-2020 by title only, please?
A resolution of the City of Jacksonville Beach Board to, oh, excuse me. Oh, we have an order. Yes, sorry.
All right.
There's nothing in the package on that.
Amended, is it amended?
It was on the, the amended amendment.
Are you, just going around with the box? Okay, apologize for the technical difficulty here. We're going to move to 080. And city manager, would you like to address this?
Before the attorney.
Okay, city attorney?
Mayor, I drafted this as an amendment, amendment item. And, and thank you to, to our Madam Clerk for bringing, reminding me of this. Is that, the way that our code reads is that our regular scheduled city council meetings shall be held at 7:00 PM on the first and third Monday of each month. I submitted this as a motion to be made by a council member for vote to allow for the city manager to begin city council meetings with a start time other than 7:00 PM, hopefully a little earlier, in order for us to address some of the backup documents, the backup of work that we're unfortunately having to postpone, and also the inevitable additional work that's going to come as a result of COVID-19. So that's why I submitted this. I'm sorry, amended item a little bit late. But I'd also like to suggest that we, in the course of the voting, that we amend the motion just to simply additionally add that the council authorizing direct the city manager to implement CMT in virtual meetings, consistent with the governor's orders. so that CMT and virtual meetings may be utilized during the duration of the COVID-19 emergency. So it's essentially requesting authority and direction for the city manager to begin city council meetings earlier than seven and also authorizing him to utilize CMT and virtual technology to conduct the meetings.
Oh, there we are.
I move that we approve a motion to allow variation of the council meeting start time of 7:00 PM as set forth in City Code Section 2-16 to allow earlier start times as necessary during the duration of the COVID-19 state of emergency and to allow the city to utilize CMT and virtual...
Technology?
Technology.
And conducting the meetings?
And conducting the meetings.
I'm sorry.
Consistent with the governor's executive orders.
Consistent with the governor's executive orders.
During the COVID-19 crisis.
During the COVID-19 crisis.
I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a painful second.
Girl scout.
I mean, you did both, and you did well. Any discussion, Mr. Nichols? What is that? I'm sorry. The names aren't the same on a keyboard, obviously. Ms. Dumas.
I just wondered the impact that this would have on our briefings. So we... And I know that we're trying to get a lot of information on the briefings. They're starting at 5:30 AM. Basically, we have meetings. And if we're starting the meeting earlier, are we starting the briefings for like lunch?
The briefing starts at seven in the morning? Of course, yes. The city manager schedules the briefings as necessary. So I'm going to leave that up to the city manager. However, I would say that all of this may end up needing adjustment for a couple of months. So I can't speak to that, but I'll leave it to the city manager.
As of right now, one of the thoughts I have would be that for the next couple of council meetings, we might want to start earlier to clear the back queues and stuff that we have. As far as briefings go, we might want to try to do briefings on the off-mondays and do them virtually, where people don't have to come into the city hall. We do it 100% by virtual telecommunications on computers. That's one of the reasons for some of the emails that I sent to each of you asking about the technology that you have. Clearly, I'd need to have those conversations with you as to dates and times to make sure that those dates and times are good with you. But that's my thought process right now in terms of the next several weeks to get back into some type of a rhythm we're on track. There's also the possibility that as we move forward, we might be holding our council meetings virtually as well, in which case no one would be in this building. We'd be doing everything, both briefings and meetings virtually. But we're still exploring the technology. There's a couple of hiccups that we're working through. But that's the thought process at this point in time.
Thank you. And the next question is, where are we with moving these council briefings online? I know I've been online at the university for almost a month now. Everything is online. We are banned from the... We go to our own office, but that's it. We're banned from any face-to-face meeting. It's out there. It's really not that great. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Orson?
Chris, what about just in the future? Let's say we wanted to move times due to a state of emergency from like a hurricane. Why specify COVID-19 in this? If we're going to change the ordinance code, why not just make it during a state of emergency, we can have council meetings at different times?
I agree. We could do that. I could actually come forward with ordinance amending that section of the code for the council. But for tonight's purposes, you could absolutely say that instead of just limiting it only to COVID-19, let's say for any declared emergency.
So I would make an amendment to strike COVID-19 from this, but during a state of emergency, then we could have varied council times. I just perceive during the hurricane, we might want to meet early before we wanted to leave, get necessary things done.
Good call.
So I think that knocking it out next, that would be my motion.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, and any other discussion from the council? Mr. Nichols?
Yeah, I guess my question is, are we trying to line up with the governor for orders for this with CMT? To be able to do CMT during the COVID-19? Doesn't this kind of kind of move the direction of what we're trying to do with this?
Right.
Separate the CMT and the meeting time for it to go this way?
Right. We are asking for the council to approve the city manager to have the discretion and authority to schedule the city council meetings earlier than seven. That sort of is a standalone situation with respect to the way our code reads because the code currently says that we shall, so therefore we must, commence our city council meetings at 7:00 PM. So Mr. Nichols is absolutely right. So that's one segment of this motion. The second is that essentially in line with the governor's current executive orders, which authorizes us and other local governments to utilize CMT and virtual technology to conduct our meetings. So perhaps we should say that during any governor's declared emergency in which we're authorized to use virtual or CMT, that we would implement that. Because again, Ms. Nichols is right. We're... The only reason we're basically allowed to conduct meetings with use of CMT or virtual technology is because the governor's executive order is currently in Florida law on that matter. There's no telling whether he's going to make that Florida law during a hurricane or a tropical storm or something like that.
So my amendment solely applies to the time, starting time. My amendment has nothing to do with the rest of the motion.
The technology aspect of it? I'm sorry, I complicated this, Mr. Mayor, but...
And the fourth thing is the clerk has to bring them together.
Yeah.
So my amendment says during a state of emergency, we have the authority to change the time, the start time of a meeting. All the rest is specific to the current times.
And isn't it going to change? Right. And there could be a second motion if any council member wanted to make that specifically with respect to use of CMT or virtual technology anytime that it's authorized under Florida law, as it currently is, and it may be in the future. Again, Florida law being the governor's executive order, which applies uniformly throughout the state.
What about in hurricane conditions, when we declare a local state of emergency and the governor doesn't declare a state of emergency?
Well, then we technically, Mayor, we wouldn't have the authority pursuant to Florida statute because we'd all revert back to the Florida statute in terms of our standard public meeting process. The only reason we're entitled or allowed to use the virtual or CMT is because the governor's executive order has authorized that for this crisis.
Mr. Nichols? Okay. Anybody else? So Madam Clerk, are you also, or do you need anything clarified?
I just need the second one clarified.
It's the same, right? You said...
I... We can amend it to just say, allow CMT...
CMT and virtual...
Pursuant to Florida law.
Right.
So that would... You're deleting the COVID-19 language there as well, Madam Clerk.
So the two notions would be move to allow the city manager to schedule city council meetings at a time other than 7:00 PM. Second motion would be allow city manager to implement use of CMT and virtual technology to conduct meetings and hearings when authorized by Florida law.
Okay.
You clear, Madam Clerk?
Wait, what? There were two motions there. We've only moved one motion, and we have to go down separately.
Thank you. The motion that we first voted on was the extending the time, or modification of time, correct? So, and that's been seconded and tabled, or put on the table, but put before the council. So we should finish this motion and then put the second motion up. Okay. Any other discussion? This is for the time modification as necessary. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Catherine Vogelsang?
Yes.
Press, did you have some to say?
Yeah, we... That's not... I'm sorry. I think this is an important time to get this right. That we had an amendment on... The first motion was made on the time and the utilizing the CMT and virtual technology. So that was the original one. Original motion that was seconded. Then Mr. Vogelsang made an amendment to that to basically delete COVID-19 and make it for any state of emergency. However, that amendment has not been voted on. So we have to vote on that first, the amendment first, and then we need to change the virtual technology part in our next amendment.
That changes both in my motion, and we go all in one motion?
I mean, it's been...
Yep. Vote... If you vote down that original amendment, the one that I probably misled you on, I'm sorry, for with respect to COVID-19. Withdraw it, or you could vote it down.
I will withdraw my first amendment, make a new motion to amend to allow the city manager during a state of emergency to change the times of the council meetings and allow the use of CMT technology for hearings or briefings or meetings pursuant to Florida law.
Second.
How you doing there, Laurie?
Much better, Captain.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, and any additional discussion by the council? City in a roll call, please.
Okay, council member Vogelsang?
Yes.
Catherine Doherty?
Yes.
Catherine DuMont?
Yes.
Catherine Golding?
Yes.
Catherine Hoffman?
Yes.
Catherine Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Layton?
Yes. Now we're back to the original motion, number modified, agenda. Is there any additional discussion by the council? City in a roll call, please.
Catherine DuMont, I'm sorry. Catherine Doherty?
Yes.
Catherine DuMont?
Yes.
Catherine Golding?
Yes.
Catherine Hoffman?
Yes.
Catherine Nichols?
Yes.
Catherine Vogelsang?
Yes.
Mayor Layton?
Yes. Okay. Moving on to the next one. Madam Clerk, please read Resolution Number 2057-2020 by title only, please.
A resolution of the City of Jacksonville Beach, Florida to temporarily approve amendments to the coastal management element of the 2030 comprehensive plan and adopt the peril flood requirements of Section 163.31782F Florida statutes, adding new objectives and policies and authorizing transmittal of the amendments to reviewing agencies pursuant to Section 163.31843B1 Florida statutes and setting an effective date.
Okay, and is the city prepared to brief us on this item?
Yes, this resolution is effectively for starting the process of a comp plan amendment related to the peril flood requirements under Florida state statutes. The planning and development department has taken the lead on this project so far, which actually started with a grant that we were awarded back in September of 2019. And here to go over some of the highlights of the particular project and comp plan amendments is Bill Lamb.
Yes, sir. Bill Lamb, planning and development director, Levenworth Third Street. First off, on behalf of our consultant, Kevnap Caff with Sterns Weaver, firm out of Tallahassee, he would like to extend his appreciation of the city council for the opportunity to assist the city with this grant. The city was required to prepare amendments to address the 2015 peril flood requirements that were limited into Florida statutes. To assist local governments in this task, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection set up a grant program, and with the aid of Sterns and Foster, we were able to get that grant. We got a $45,000 grant. The grant was split into two phases. The first phase involved gathering of data from different sources and modeling the impacts over time of sea level rise, spring tide, storm surge, and collective events such as sea level rise combined with storm surge. The first public workshop was held on December 19th, 2019 to present the findings and obtain public input. Phase two involved the... Or phase two, which is where we are now, involved the drafting of the coastal management element objectives and policies based on the analysis that the consultants came up with for the first workshop. Second workshop was held on February 24th, 2020 to discuss the proposed amendments and to obtain an additional public input. Two of our council people were present at the second public workshop. I believe we had at least one council person and a planning commissioner at the first workshop, so we had some good downs. The workshops weren't overly heavily attended, but we got some good input. Okay, the coastal management element of the comprehensive plan for the peril of flood policies must contain a redevelopment component that outlines the principles that must be used to address and eliminate inappropriate and unsafe development in the coastal area when opportunities arise. Land use strategies identified statewide for potential policy options include the following. Retreat, which, and I'm going to caveat each one of these as I go through them, retreat, which is really not feasible in our built-out community. Retreat would mean buying out inhabited properties, paying for relocation, and then that is basically not feasible. Retreat's not feasible in the city, nor in most of the developed parts of Florida. Density intensity reduction. We do have limited opportunities where we've got some undeveloped properties, but they are enlarged. Because we're built out, we really don't have a whole lot of opportunity for density decreases. Which leads us to the next two or three, which are our primary, most feasible for our city. The first one being elevation and vertical mitigation, which is either elevating the structure, elevating the land pad around the structure, or both. The second one is increased open space and reducing impervious surfaces. The increase in open space, I think everybody's fairly aware that we've been wanting to purchase the property north of Second Avenue North going through the boat ramp for many years. That would be a big open space acquisition opportunity, and that would fall in line with one of the strategies that the state's recommending. Another one is increased retention capacity. Stormwater retention on individual projects as opposed to, right now, I believe they handle the first event or 25-year flood event. We can increase that to handle bigger flood events. And the last one is limited shoreline hardening and revestment. Our classic example, our successful example here in the city of shoreline hardening is our successful doom project. Such a project where the revestment along the intercoastal, and we'll talk about the phase one advice, is really not practical. We're talking about interrupting a valuable ecosystem and hardening it for the protection of the intercoastal front-taking properties alone. Basically, the phase one report, I didn't want to bring the maps up on purpose because I was... I just remember she was at the meeting. The big point to me when we were going through both of these workshops, everybody wanted to see the maps and see where their house was. That's not the point of the maps. And I was sitting back here, and the maps were back on the back partition wall. I said, "Don't need to look at these maps from back here and understand..." This is one model of what the potential impacts would be in the year 2060 for the two big ones were the spring tide and the two categories of storm surge. And the idea is, the coast is fine. The coast, even in 2060, with sea level rise combined with either a Cat 1 storm event or the spring tides, the higher tide, the higher seasonal tides, as they call them. The coastline was fine. There is, just like there was from our last two storms, there are impacts to the fringe on the intercoastal. The sanctuary subdivision would be majorly impacted, not by extreme high water, but water of several feet, as would Evans Drive, Tallwood areas. So it's the kind of... It's an amplification of the impacts we're seeing right now from our big storm events and from the spring tide when it covers up Second Avenue North. So the modeling that they presented was actually good, and they actually, we chose to use the highest impact, the highest sea level rise impact associated with all this. So it's fairly conservative and built in in terms of what the impacts are. The planning commission considered the proposed amendments on March 9th, 2020, and they did vote unanimously to recommend approval. And I'll go through the proposed amendments in a second. I'll show you the one case where they did want to make one amendment. With that one amendment, the unanimously recommended approval. One thing I want to tell you while we're going through this, this is a public hearing tonight. It's not indicated so in the agenda, but it is an advertised public hearing, so if we can open it closely here. I don't know if we have any speaker cards from the public. If we do, we'll get to it that point. Please make sure we do open a closer public hearing. So following tonight's action, if you approve to transmit the proposed amendments, these were draft amendments at this point, then we'll go to the state, regional planning council, DEP, DEO, Department of State, and we'll get their comments, and then we'll come back. If there are revisions that we're required to make, we'll make those revisions. It'll come back to city council as an ordinance for adoption. That requires two readings. The first reading of that will be a public hearing as well. So this has been very well vetted with the public. We appreciate it. We appreciate it, Sterns and Foster. I've got him on standby, I can dial him in to call if there are questions that you may have. And I'm going to briefly run through the goals, objectives, and policies, there's six pages of them. One thing I know in our long-term strategy was talking about getting an outside holistic look at our land development code. Some of these policies have recommendations for land development code amendments, and those are the ones I want you to pick up on. When the comprehensive plan amendment is approved, typically within one year, we follow up with the recommended land development code text amendments. If we are not at that point where we are ready to get the outside holistic view of our land development code, staff may prepare individual amendments just to direct, to the land development code, just to direct the directives and coastal maintenance development. Conversely, if we get that cart rolling before then, that would be part of the effort that this extra look would be on the whole land development code. But there will be land development code amendments required as a result of the passage of these policies. And rather than go through all of the policies, we've got, I think, I think they're with the slides, I'm not sure if the slides are in there or not, but we've got them in. All of the new, there are one new objective and six new policies, all following the existing goal CM3 in our coastal management element. The goal says, vulnerability of people and property in Jacksonville Beach to coastal hazards such as hurricane damage and coastal flooding, and now sea level rise, shall be minimized. The new objective under that proposed is, the city shall adopt amendments on their policies, regulatory standards, administrative procedures, incentives, or other strategies to reduce the vulnerability to sea level rise, high tides, events, storm surge, stormwater runoff, and flash floods. And under that policy, there are six proposed new policies. The first one deals with decision-making processes. It sets four standards that we will vet against comprehensive plan amendments going forward, land use and zoning amendment decisions, subdivision, and the review that my staff does for site plans, subdivision, new construction. And that one, under the subdivision planning and development, the planning commission wanted us to add, I'm going to read the number three, because this includes their amendment. Subdivision plan unit development site plan reviews. The city shall ensure all applicable policies and regulations are enforced during development review procedures, comma, and this is the amendment from the planning commission, shall encourage approaches to reduce and/or mitigate flood impacts, comma, and shall evaluate opportunities for offering incentives for exceeding mental standards. Two of the other policies under decision-making processes or budgetary process and strategic plans will consider opportunities to mitigate flood impacts as we prepare our budget, you know, if there are acquisitions that we can make, if something happens and we are able to get the property north of Beach Boulevard, if it's, that will have an impact on our budget process. The last one is infrastructure improvements. The city shall give high priority to infrastructure improvements and other engineering solutions that will increase public health and safety by improving flood resiliency. The city shall evaluate the use of green infrastructure designs such as low-impact stormwater designs who are feasible and effective. The second policy deals with following redevelopment, development principles, strategies, and engineering solutions to reduce the extent of real property and structures located in the flood zones. So part of this analysis that Sterns and Weaver did, they identified, granted, it was on a specific model run, but it gives you the level of impact in terms of how many structures would be impacted, how many acres of land, how many streets, and that, and that's in that phase one report that was included with your package. Let's see, that's number two. Okay, okay. Coming up, one of the policies also has in it, the city shall amend its floodplain regulations. This is a proposed, this will result in a proposed land development amendment. We'll amend floodplain regs to require the elevation of new structures and substantially repaired or improved structures in flood zones a minimum of one and a half feet above applicable base flood elevations. And the current standard is one foot. And rather than just come in one fell swoop, we're talking, out here at 2060 now, so we're talking about 40 years, we feel it's more appropriate to incrementally raise that additional level and not try to do it all at once, because you put people out of business, number one. Depending on how high you go, it can also put the height gap involved, because you're bringing the base up and you're still leaving a gap of 35. So we think in the short term, at least for probably the duration of my tenure here, I hope it's five years or so, the additional half a foot, we think is adequate and positively addresses and gets people in the mind. That's what it is now, it could go up another five inches in 10 years, it could go up another foot in 10 years. So that's one that will result in a proposed land development code amendment. The next one that would is, we'll amend our floodplain regulations to require a cumulative calculation of improvement costs over a two-year period to determine whether improvements constitute a substantial improvement. Right now, if you substantially improve your house and it's below flood elevation, because you're substantially improving it, anything you do, you have to make the house meet our new flood standards. So it's either elevate the house, repair it, or down it and rebuild. Right now, that's just based on one permanent event. If you pull a building up, if you put a permanent application to us right now to model your house, if it's over 50% of the value of it, that triggers a substantial improvement, and then your whole house has to come and comply with. This proposed amendment would extend that, so any permits you do over a two-year period, any calendar two-year period, if that cumulatively tips the 50% of the value of your house, at that point, as soon as you tip it, you can't go forward until you retrofit your house to the current flood standards. And that's statewide, a lot of communities already do that, we haven't done that in our code, but that's a recommendation from our consultants. Another one, this one we've already done, the city shall ensure that drainage swales, ditches, stormwater retention areas, and urban conveyance systems are maintained to achieve maximum design capacity. The city shall conduct periodic inspections of private drainage systems under its jurisdiction to ensure the enforcement of permitting conditions. And this helps, because some of our coastal ocean forests, which is the Tallwood area, there's several remotes of ocean forests, they have some private systems in there. Sanctuary is a private stormwater system. So, and before storms, now, we go in there, they know the hot spots, they go in to make sure the drainage outlets are out, everything's flowing properly. Let me see what Trump's going to write. I believe that's it, the significant was required. Hold on, that's pretty much it. So other than that, if you've had an opportunity to read the goals and objectives that were provided in with the staff materials, perhaps answering questions about them, or if it's a question that gets into too much detail, I'll call a consultant, see if he is available, he's supposed to be watching on YouTube right now. So with that, if you want to open the hearing, or I say your direction.
Yeah, this isn't a hearing, this is a...
Public comment.
Actually...
This is a legislative action, so it does not require the quasi-judicial script, because this is actually establishing regulations, so...
Okay. Okay, we haven't read the motion first. I think we need to before we open the floor.
The move that we adopt Resolution Number 2057-2020 tentatively approving text amendments to the Jacksonville Beach 2030 comprehensive plan related to the peril of flood requirements of Florida statutes and authorizing transmittal of the amended elements to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for review.
Second?
And a motion and a second, open the floor for discussion. And Ms. Demont, do you have a question? No, saw you flip a switch.
Oh, that's different.
In that case, we're going to go to...
I'll call the city.
Yeah, I've got public comment.
Okay.
Interesting. We're going to do, Ms. Coughlin first, go ahead.
I just wanted to make a comment, if I could. I spoke with Mr. Metcalf, yeah, via email today. When I went through this phase one report, which was really extensive and very, very good, and I also want to, sorry, I also want to thank Jacob and Heather for putting a lot of this information on the website. However, the phase one report references several maps that are not on our website, and I just think for public consumption, we need to have everything, it needs to be complete on the website, so if we could at least add these, like the potable water map that he references, and the cooperative land cover map, and the soil map, and the infrastructure maps, and, you know, I just think we need to have a complete reference for the, for the community to be able to see, because we weren't able to see those maps either.
Right, that's, that was the intent of the public workshops, to have the paper maps. These maps are huge data files, and we're kind of having a problem with compressing them to where they're easily bootable, so when you click on them on our website, it then take three minutes to generate.
It's not bad, actually, though, because, I mean, I pulled, I pulled up those maps, so it was great. I mean, whatever you did was great.
They are, they are working. And in the interim, if somebody needs to do it before we get them on the website, we do have the paper maps available still?
Yeah, but City Hall's closed.
That's true.
Yeah. So, we really need to get up to technology on that, if we could, that would be really, really good. And if you could, please, explain to us, because I had to ask about this, and I don't know how many of my fellow council members know this, but it's the third in CM3.43E, it talks about elevating first floor of structures on pilings and A zones to allow for parking beneath the structure, and also elevating the first floor structures above minimum regulatory requirements in B zones. So if you could explain to us where our A zones and B zones are, I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. The A zones are non-velocity-related flood zones, the intercoastal primarily, that's not, velocity comes in the V zone, the velocity on the oceanfront. That is rising water in association with scourge, which will actually undermine the structure, it's not just getting the building, but it's actually undermining the structure. We have D zones along the oceanfront. The A zones are the other zones in the city. Ms. Ireland, I think when she responded to you, or she may have even had it in her text that I remember, was talking about the only A zones, she meant unnumbered A zones, in golf course, so we don't have any things to deal with there. But we do have AO and AE zones, those are rising water flood zones. And the idea was, this policy talks about using the same strategy for elevating the first floor as we do in B zones. Well, the oceanfront properties, whether you know it or not, because we enforce those V zone regulations, the first habitable floor elevation, and then the most of the oceanfront properties is in the 15, 16, 17, 18-foot range, that's why Joe's Crash Shack is up at that elevation. That's Western, that's why they're up at that elevation. The first habitable floors of, what's it now, shares are four points. That first habitable floor of rooms is up on that second level, so that's what we do in B zones right now. Any of the newer construction you see along the oceanfront itself, you'll note, you may not notice it if you've gone in to visit, if you go through the garage, they park in their garage coming off the street, but none of the new construction has that first habitable floor at the garage level. There's actually a fairly decent run of stairs within the garage to get up to that floor level. The houses are on piles, you don't notice it because they're either skirted, they've got breakaway walls, or they have landscape and filler around them, so they're on piles now. That's what, this, when you read this regulation for A zones, they're saying, we need to, we're not requiring it, we're just supporting regulatory, which would be FEMA, and financial incentive, which could be lender practices. If they want to give people bonuses for going way over and above the foot and a half minimum that we require, we're just saying, we're not going to object to that, we actually support that. And that's looking more in the long term, 40 years from now, than looking over the next five or 10 years. Next five or 10 years, I think people are going to be, not, they're going to have to do the one and a half foot, but as we get, Steve starts seeing some of these elevations, and it gets a little wetter along the intercoastal, some people may say, "Look, I'm not going to build," or the lender will say, you know, "We'll give you a decent rate, if you do this elevated structure and park underneath it, it's not a still-looking house." It doesn't have to be the still-looking house, there are plenty of camouflage architectural ways that you can get around it, so it still just looks like a house, like I said on the oceanfront, you pull in, but it's actually up on, it's stills. So that's what that is, it does apply in the face of the minimum one and a half foot standard. This is just a longer look, and we're trying to read the tea leaves and say, "Hey, they're probably going to be coming up with this at some point, the structure will be at least two or three or four feet higher than they are." So if you go to an additional four or five feet higher, park underneath it. Thank you, I appreciate it. Yes, ma'am.
Before we go any further, I want to apologize, this agenda was not set up as a public hearing in my script.
Yes, sir, no, I understand, that's why, that's why I wanted to make that clarification, because it's a required advertising.
No, I understand, but what I'm saying is I skipped the proper sequence, I'm supposed to look for public comment before we get to the council floor. So is there, city attorney, did you get any public comment?
There's no public comment submitted on this item there.
Okay, thank you, there's no, we don't have any public comments, so we can go back to... Anybody else have a, Ms. Hoffman?
Just wanted to say, regrettably, I was unable to attend either of the workshops, I'm really glad to see this product, and I just wanted to comment on two, one good thing, it was nice to see that so much of the vulnerable space is already conservation land. So hopefully, if we, for example, the Second Avenue property, that would do nothing but help that ratio, but I was really shocked to see that the most vulnerable area of the beaches is on the west side and not the east side, because I would have just logically assumed that the coast would have been more susceptible. And there's a lot of relatively new neighborhoods back there, including one that's on the other side of the gate that will not be named, but that's relatively new. So just, was this a surprise to you, or how did you feel when you saw the 2060 models and saw how much of that kind of west side land is going to be?
I've been here long enough and through enough storms that it wasn't a surprise to me, but most of the public sitting in the workshop, they were very surprised. The reason being is, a little bit of theology, the hybrids of the city where the hospital is, used to be the golf course where, just north of, just east of, talking of the, anyway, that's part of the hybrids, that's at 20 feet, right? You gradually get down from 20 feet, and if you think of the concrete bulkhead where you can see it on the oceanfront, that's at about 10 feet. So there's a gradual rise up from 10, about 10 feet, from where the beach front is up to where the hospital is. Conversely, when you go from the hospital to the edge of the intercoastal, it goes from 20 feet down to an average of five feet. So the intercoastal frontage of the city is five feet lower than the oceanfront. And it's always been like that, but that's partly why we've always tried to capture as much of that wetland system, because that mitigates it, number one, it knocks down any of the surge, any of the velocity of that water, but it also, it gives it area to retreat without getting into the marshlands. So we've got marshfront houses, they're at that five-foot elevation, but that flood zones in those areas are about the same, five feet. So going forward, you would build a foot down above. These standards would not affect the oceanfront, because as I told you before, oceanfront B zones are already required to get up on stilts to get your first habitable floor, and you've got the option to park underneath it. So it wasn't a surprise to me, just because I just know the lay of the land of the city.
That's it. Ms. Golding?
I'm sorry, I just have a quick follow-up, in follow-up to what Ms. Hoffman was asking about. So the most recent development that we've had that's on Waterway Island Lane, was there anything done at that time when the, when that road was put in and the lots were permitted to make sure that those homes were built so that they would, you know, be prepared for this?
Not for sea level rise, that was not on the radar back then. It was, but however, the fact that it is in a flood zone, and it's already in a category one evacuation zone, yes, ma'am, it does meet our current standards. The roads do, all the house lines do. Going forward, they have to be a little bit higher, and that property just opened up to be freed, because Mr. Roberts passed away, or the family decided to let it out for development, because that family property exists as two separate subdivisions right now. And you're right, that is some of our group of construction.
And the comments from the council? The only thing I'll add is, the Jacksonville Beach, Neptune Beach, Atlantic Beach sponsored a resiliency seminar over Fletcher High School. It was, it was interesting, and it was really my first exposure to this, and then I've attended two of them in Jacksonville. And it's exciting to see us take the first step to really make a planning difference in what's happening in our city with this sea rise. And it's, you know, there's still people out there that think that it's some kind of fairy tale, and it's definitely not. So this is, this is a good work to start from, and appreciate all the work going into it.
Yes, sir, I appreciate the staff. This was primarily Ms. Ireland, and she did the direction and is doing the grant program. And I apologize for putting it for this meeting, we whipped out a little bit longer presentation for it, if this were a normal meeting, but this is grant-driven, and we're getting to the end deadline where we have to have the final product in to get the full grant money, so we just decided to...
Okay, perfect. Madam Clerk, let's get a roll call, please.
Catherine Demont?
Yes.
Catherine, Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Catherine Hoffman?
Yes.
Catherine Nichols?
Yes.
Catherine Vogel saying?
Yes.
Catherine Doherty?
Yes.
Mayor Latham?
Yes. And Madam Clerk, would you please read Order Number 2020-8136, first reading, public hearing by Title I, please.
An ordinance amending Chapter 28, Article 4 of the coastal ordinances in the City of Jacksonville Beach, Florida revising Article 4s to be consistent with amendments to Section 337.401 Florida statutes, adopting regulations of wireless communication facilities in public right-of-way, providing for legislative findings, severability, refilled conflicts, and an effective date.
Thank you, ma'am. This ordinance is before the council for a public hearing to be considered on its first reading. I now open the public hearing to Order Number 2020...
I'll now open the public hearing to ordinance number 2020-8136. Is there anyone that has reached out for public comment?
Yes, mayor, we have comments on this agenda item. And this one is submitted by Elizabeth Wright, 1024 Twenty First Street North, Jacksonville Beach. Dear Mayor and City Councilmember, we ask that you impose a moratorium on, quote, "small cells," unquote, and other wireless infrastructure permits, process, and deployment until the COVID-19 emergency is over. The wireless providers are using the COVID-19 emergency as cover to expand and cement their rapid and virtually unsupervised deployment of harmful wireless infrastructure. Our local leaders should not have to dedicate time and resources to policing. Whether the wireless companies are following local and state law, they have far more important things to do. The FCC wireless permit rules allow emergency moratoria. Homeland Security Guidelines emphasize that maintenance of existing communications capability is the priority. New construction is not essential. The COVID-19 emergency has led to a government shutdown of nonessential activity. Hospitals, emergency response, and local officials are overwhelmed, and they must be allowed to focus on what is indeed, quote, "essential," unquote. Now is not the time to be dedicating resources to expanding rather than just maintaining our networks. The FCC has directly held, and local jurisdiction can impose, a temporary halt to deployment and permits during emergencies. In the matter of accelerating, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. In the matter of accelerating wireline broadband deployment by removing barriers, FCC 18-111, 33 FCC Red, 7705, 7784-7785, Section 157 of 2018, states, quote, "We recognize that there may be limited situations in the case of a natural disaster or other comparable emergency where an express or de facto moratoria that violates Section 253, Subpart A, may nonetheless be necessary to protect the public's safety and welfare or to ensure the continued quality of telecommunications services." Homeland Security has declared that local government is on the forefront and can take control over determining whether to temporarily halt all nonessential activity. Homeland Security Guidance Documents prioritize maintenance of existing communication systems and do not support essential, the quote-unquote "essential" status for new construction. See Homeland Security, Cybersecurity, and Infrastructure Security Agency identifying critical infrastructure during COVID-19. And the web address of www.cisa.gov/identifyingcriticalinfrastructureduringcovid19. And she also provides, Ms. Wright also provides E dash Critical Infrastructure and Key Resources Support Appendix Focus, she puts in quotes, "focus on protection, response, recovery, and restoration." Homeland Security, like the FCC, understands that it is essential in an emergency situation to justify focusing on protecting, responding, recovering, and restoring of existing systems. But new communication facilities, construction is and should be deemed nonessential and subject to lockdown for so long as we are under emergency conditions. Cities can and should impose a moratorium on deployment in their local area and freeze the permit process until COVID-19 emergency is over.
Thank you, sir. Do you have another one, or is that it?
Mayor, we have another submission on this item from Michelle.
Just a point of clarification, we're still in public hearing, we have an open floor in the council.
I know, I have a question.
Okay.
This next email, this next supplemental is identical, is verbatim to the original one. Can you just state the name of the person?
Absolutely, absolutely. The, the name is Michelle Lynn Gavon. The address is 3688 Sanctuary Way South. And it is the same submission that I just read from Elizabeth Wright.
Is this the only one too?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does anybody need a recess? Am I the only one that needs a recess?
All right, I'll second that.
Thank you. Just five minutes. Normally I would call the mayor for a timeout here, but everything's cumulative. So, of course, Sheriff would have to run up here with a squirt bottle and everything. So let's take a five-minute recess, please.
Yeah, they kind of want to get everybody together.
We've all seen Brother Town, the Three Beaches, it's not the only one.
Exactly.
All right. We got everybody again. I apologize for that delay, but I'm very grateful that you provided me that opportunity. So we have read the public comments, and we move on to the next phase of the public hearing. Okay, according to this guy, the next issue is to close the public hearing, request a motion. But before we do that, did you want to respond to the, because typically we have a response to public comment?
Mayor, the, this is an area that apparently there was a great lobbying effort, and this is essentially another example of state preemption, for the most part, in that the Florida statutes essentially dictate for us to make these changes to our code. And this changes to the Florida law occurred in 2019. So we're catching up, and we're complying with the amendments and changes that Florida statutes would require. For the comments that were submitted with respect to the moratoria on construction, by doing our, by approval of this ordinance, this isn't signifying that the council is allowing construction. It's simply an amendment to our code with respect to the wireless communications within the right-of-way, and the facility within our right-of-way. We're just making an amendment to our code pursuant to the Florida statute requirements. So it's not, it's not us authorizing construction of these facilities during this COVID-19. It's not that at all.
Right. And I just piggyback on that and said that I was actively engaged with the League City and League of Mayors to fight this. The premise, this is one of the great lobbying fiascos that I've seen in 27 years in Tallahassee. But the, you know, the negative impact is that there's nothing we can do. So once again, you know, if anybody out there in TV land wants to know who to contact, I'm happy. You reach out to the clerk's office, I'll show you my contact information. And I'll look at what the legislators have made that decision. Okay? And now we're going to go ahead and then to close the public hearing and request a motion, please.
I move that we adopt ordinance number 2020-8136 in the new city code, Chapter 28, Article 4, to adopt new Florida statute requirements, regulations, and standards of wireless communications facilities within the public right-of-way.
Second.
And a motion in the second, and now an open floor for discussion from the council. Was there anybody that'd like to address this? Ms. Hoffman?
I was on the first page, thank you, Ms. Hoffman. On the first page, there's unresolved legal challenges with this, the state law. Why wouldn't that stop this altogether? Are they continuing to progress with this during the legal challenges?
That's right. They would move forward until a court tells them that it was unconstitutional for them to enact that Florida law.
And then, sorry, to part real quick. We got two, two letters in public comment, both were exactly the same letter, which tells us that there's an organization that's provided this, this law. Who, do we know who, who is working in opposition to this? Obviously, beyond the Florida League of Cities, that's already done, done their work.
Right. I don't know who is in opposite.
Nor do I.
No, I don't.
Not, not based on these letters. Maybe it was Florida League City, Florida League of Mayors, Florida Association of Candidates, everybody.
But they're not actively opposing the local implementation? They were opposing it at state level?
No, everybody's in the exact same.
Okay, so somebody else is opposing it at the local level? Okay, that's interesting. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we're going to go ahead and close the discussion. Madam Clerk, we get a roll call, please.
Councilor Goldman?
Yes.
Councilor Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilor Nichols?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Bogosan?
Yes.
Councilor Doherty?
Yes.
Councilor Devant?
Yes.
Mayor Latham?
Yes. And Madam Clerk, can you please read ordinance number 2020-8138, first reading, public hearing by Title I, please.
An ordinance to create a new section 31-61, paid parking program in Chapter 31, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Article 3, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Division 3, Parking Regulations on the City of Jacksonville Beach Code Ordinances, to codify elements of the city's paid parking program in certain city lots, provided for legislative findings, repeal conflicts, severability, complication, and an effective date.
This ordinance is before the council for public hearing. Consideration on its first reading. I'll now open the public hearing of ordinance number 2020-8138. Is there anyone that's reached out in the public?
No, sir.
No, sir, we haven't received no public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go ahead and close the public hearing and request a motion, please.
I move that we approve ordinance number 2020-8138 to create a new section 31-61 of Chapter 31 of the city code of ordinances to codify elements of the city's paid parking program as enforceable local laws.
Second.
And a motion in the second, and we're opening. Did you want to address staff presentation?
Yes, sir. The, this ordinance was prepared for enactment of... This ordinance was prepared, um, for enactment of the paid parking program, fees, and enforcement, um, essentially to codify, uh, what the paid parking program is. And it enables us to point to a particular local law in our code with respect to the fees that are charged, the processes, and the enforcement and collection, uh, procedures associated with paid parking program. And the PowerPoint shows, um, thanks to GP, the four parking lots that are the subject of this paid parking program.
Thank you, sir. We're gonna head, and we're open on the floor. Is there anybody, uh, for debate? Ms. Hoffman?
Um, I have expressed a couple of times, um, that I feel the word residential is the wrong word to use regarding the resident parking program, where we allow Jacksonville Beach residents to park for free. Um, to mean that it says residential parking program, that means parking in a residential area. Residential doesn't describe a person. It describes an area or a dwelling, so, um, I don't know if anybody else has that, has that same concern, but I feel like there could be a, some confusion because we do not have a residential parking program. And by that, I mean, if you park, if you live in a certain area, you would have a permit to park in that area, and it's listed three times, um, and does any, is this just me, or does anybody else think it should be resident in that residential?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I move to amend the ordinance that we replace the word residential with resident, um, in Section 31, 61, Number 1. Number 2, C, I mean, I'm sorry, Number 3, C. And at the end of Number 3, C, there's three places that say residential parking program.
Second.
You have a motion in the second. Madam Clerk, could you get the locations of this? Okay. Floor is open for debate. Anybody, this is a debate for the motion to change the 3. Mrs. Golden?
Ms. Hoffman, I don't see a 3C.
I'm sorry. I was going through that. Yes, 3C, thank you. On this, the page is, don't have page numbers. The, where you have the chart of the fees, the fee structure is A, then B, C. Oh, the second line, thank you, thank you. And then the next page, at the very top of the next page.
Any other discussion from the council or debate? This is on the motion. Seeing none, uh, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Catherine Hoffman?
Yes.
Catherine Nichols?
Yes.
Catherine Vogelsang?
Yes.
Catherine Doherty?
Yes.
Catherine Demont?
Yes.
Catherine Golding?
Yes.
Mayor Latham?
Yes, and now we're back to the original motion. Is there any more discussion on the original motion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Catherine Nichols?
Yes.
Catherine Vogelsang?
Yes.
Catherine Doherty?
Yes.
Catherine Demont?
Yes.
Catherine Golding?
Yes.
Catherine Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Latham?
Yes, and before we adjourn tonight, I think, uh, City Attorney, did you want to take a couple of minutes to address our emergency procedures?
Actually, I, I, I can also answer questions, hopefully. Um, but to, this first chance we've had, um, the body collectively together, so a lot has transpired since the last time we saw you as a body on March 2nd. We have, uh, as a staff, essentially been working day and night to protect the community with this crisis. Um, through Mike and Karen's leadership, and GP, and Steve, and all the department directors. It's been, and staff, it's been an incredible team effort. We're trying to keep pace with the flurry of changes that occur seemingly by the minute, um, from the national level, the state level, local, and then all of the issues that could not have possibly been prepared for and foreseen that our departments are encountering with respect to city operations, um, internally, with respect to our staff and, and the work that our staff needs to do to adapt to this crisis. And meanwhile, trying to conduct the, what would be considered normal in city, operations and city business. So we're, we're busy running, um, two races at the same time, uh, and, and definitely trying to keep the city council informed to the best of our ability as things are changing, um, again, on a national level and then here locally, of course, which is most important to you. Um, with respect to the procedures and the, um, authority, we are essentially operating under a declared state of emergency, which our code allows the, the mayor or the city manager to declare a local emergency. The importance of doing that is, is really tech, you know, knowing, of course, that we're under a state declared emergency and, of course, a national declared state of emergency. But having us declare it locally, um, engages our comprehensive, uh, emergency management plan, and also is a very important box to check off with respect to fee line public assistance. And to renew those under the extensions that you've seen, to continue to renew that declared state of emergency is important for us to do that as well, for, for those reasons. So the way that we're currently operating is consistent with our municipal comprehensive emergency management plan. And Mike, as the city manager, is, um, in total control of the operations, and he's working well with the mayor on a daily basis, or for the most part on a daily basis, but on a regular basis. Um, and we're, we are, uh, working as a unit between, you know, the leaders of the city operations, Mike and Karen and myself and GP. Um, and in the way that the comprehensive man, emergency management plan reads is that the city council shall be informed. So, I know it's, it seems, it seems like a very difficult situation, but you, you have all gone through the hurricane status, and it's, it's similar to that, which you are obviously the policymakers of the city, but in terms of the chief executive officer and the chief operations officer, Mike is in that capacity, and he's doing that. And it seems like he's never sleeping, and he's always doing that, so. Um, that's, that is essentially the way that we're operating and the system that we're operating under. Um, and I'd say that we will amend the, and revise the emerg, our emergency plan just for some changes that are necessary. For example, there's still references there as, uh, the Jacksonville Beach Fire Chief and his roles and duties, so there's, there's changes like that that we can make, but...
How has that been? How's the fire contact been? This is our first emergency since not having it. How's that been going?
You know, I would need Steve to talk about that. I don't think, he's not here. So, I, I can't answer that, and, and, you know, with any confidence. Um, but I can tell you that I see Steve ten times a day, every day. He's here first thing in the morning when we're here, and he's here late at night, and there's no, there's no dying in him. There's, he's, you know, working incredible hours. Um, he definitely gives us updates every single day. He provides us with all the information under his responsibilities. He hasn't missed any of that. Uh, I'm sure he gives Mike and Karen and, and GP updates constantly. Uh, he keeps me informed, and he certainly asks me for help when he feels that he needs some advice or counsel. Um, otherwise, we're operating consistent with the emergency plan that we have in place. And amazingly, there is a section in there for pandemic. Uh, and it is, and, and by the way, Karen was involved in, in the preparation of this, and it's an incredible section because it was a complete forecast, an accurate forecast of exactly what we're dealing with. And that involves the powers, um, for the city manager to take many of the actions that he has taken um, in conjunction with the mayor and the other mayors and other managers of the beaches cities, and of course, um, City of Jacksonville. Closure of the beaches, trying to limit gatherings, all for the public safety and the welfare of the citizens of City of Jacksonville Beach. Um, he, he's, the city manager is basically following the management plan to a T, and, and with particular emphasis on that area that's addressed pandemic. He, he's making all of the decisions that seem to have been predicted amazingly by that document. Um, and all, I would say that all of the enforcement orders that we have in place locally, and of course, those that we're following on a state and national level, um, are all implemented for purposes of public safety and the public health, and to help mitigate this crisis. And I think everything that we have implemented so far does that. And at this point, just as speaking of city, uh, city attorney, I would suggest that we stay the course, and we do not make any changes to our current plan um, as, uh, we get updates, uh, from the national health experts and the different agencies on a federal and state level, and we are headed to the peak. So, we should not make any changes to cause a drastic exposure, but we should keep up with the plans that we have in place. And I would suggest that, knowing, you know, that I work with GP on a daily basis and his commanders on a daily basis, I know that our police force is, um, doing everything they can, and we sh, I would recommend that we do nothing to add to their burdens and therefore also add to problem, you know, and possible problems of safety, security, and welfare for the public. We're doing the right thing. Um, but if you have any questions about the way that we're handling it, I'd be glad to answer your questions.
Go ahead, Ms. Hoffman.
I don't, mine's just a comment. Um, having gone through, uh, two hurricanes with the city, I completely understand the, um, emergency orders and that we're, we're not at the table at that time, and it makes complete sense to me. But I will say this time, more than any other time, I feel like the communicate, the daily communication from the city manager and the emails of the executive orders from you to keep us at least informed about what's going on and what's going on behind, um, the scenes, as well as our communications to the citizens on social media. They've been really clean, concise, effective, um, and I just, so I would just say, you know, it's a really hard time, but it's, um, I think really important to communicate, not only to us, but to the citizens, and I think that's been done really well. So, kudos. I would stop her.
I, I agree, and I, I'd just like to add a couple of things. I asked Chris to talk about this a little bit today because we've all went through the hurricanes, and we all kind of know how it works. Uh, but that was just such a bing bang boom thing. This is just going on and on. So, we wanted to make sure that everybody felt comfortable and up to speed with how things were evolving. Uh, I, I, Mike, the daily email, chronological email, where you go back and look at everything from day one, and it's added on there, so I mean, that's a great brief sheet if you need to go to a town hall meeting with your constituents or anything like that. Uh, also, I know we're all getting emails, uh, and I'm gonna address the beach closure here in just a second. But, uh, you know, we, uh, one of the things that we need to make sure it's clarified, and, and hopefully the beaches leaders listening will say something about this too. Uh, probably half of the comments that I've received, and maybe the ones you've received as well, uh, include giving special preferential treatment to the beaches residents. What people don't understand is that we're a public beach. That means we're a hundred percent public. We can't possibly, uh, eliminate people from the other side of the dish from coming over, or people from St. John's County, or people from Nassau County. Uh, it's a public beach. There are penalties that are associated with that. And we learned in the early in our term, uh, our first term together, uh, when we talked about residential parking, that we were gonna lose potentially our, uh, refurbishment money because we were taking stands that were a little bit too aggressive, uh, on doing what's right for the cities, so, or giving preferential, potential preferential treatment to our citizens. We, uh, you know, you've heard me say this a gazillion times, with the three cities in one community, um, I'm, I'm proud to tell you, I've never seen it work so well as it has over the last month. Uh, I have a tremendous amount of respect for my colleagues, Mayor Glasser, Mayor Brown, and also Mayor Curry. Mayor, Mayor Curry and I probably talk four or five times a week uh, about what's going on, how things are looking at the beach, how temperaments are holding up, uh, what the, uh, enthusiasm level is for, you know, the city staff and keeping things going. And, uh, I'm really proud of the relationship that we've developed. But keep in mind, and Chris kind of talked about this a little bit, this all stems from the governor. Uh, you know, the governor made some decisions, uh, or, I'm sorry, the president. The president made some decisions, the governor made some decisions, and then it became our turn to make decisions. And what we did was immediately got together as a group. We've had several meetings with city managers, chief of police, and mayors. We've had several, they've had several of their own meetings, and mayors have all had several, several of their own meetings. And we are all determined to do what's best for our, our respective citizens and for our community. Uh, but public safety is by far our biggest responsibility. I mean, I, any one of you, when you ran for office, uh, today, when you talk to your constituents, what do we tell them? Public safety is our, our number one priority, and that's where we are today. So, a lot of hard decisions have been made. They were unanimous decisions. Mayor Curry, Mayor Brown, Mayor Glasser, and myself all agreed this was the best path to take. But I want to talk this then about closing the beach and addressing my colleagues here on the council and also the people watching on TV tonight. Um, you know, it was, public safety, once again, is our, our primary responsibility. But if we were to open the beach right now, we would see more people on the beach than have ever been there in our history. Now, keep in mind, we have enough nanny to support four chairs, lifeguard chairs. Uh, and when, just before we actually did close the beach, uh, the city manager, myself, the captain of lifeguards, and Steve Schott, I think, went with us. Uh, and we looked at, uh, the whole beach from Seagate Avenue down to the county line, uh, and it was a madhouse, an absolute madhouse. So we tried to take some procedural steps to get it under control, working with GP and, and his team. Uh, and quite frankly, it didn't work. It didn't work for a couple of reasons. Number one, people tend to forget there's high tides and low tides. You know, when it's low tide, it's easiest to have to do social separation and, "What's wrong? Look, look, we're doing this." Well, that's not a very limited time each day. When the tide rises once or twice a day, they're like pancakes stacked on top of each other. That was a problem. Not having enough lifeguards, that was a problem. Uh, taxing our police to enforce, you know, there were some, several items written into the record tonight from public comment where people have these great ideas that this is working in other areas. We intentionally delayed the closure of our beaches and elements of our parks, not even the whole parks yet, uh, to do our very best to leave options out there for the, the citizens of this community to enjoy what the, you know, the facilities that they paid for. Uh, but what we're finding is, uh, you know, you give an inch and they take a mile, type of thing. And, and not with everybody, it was a smaller number of people. But the concern is, that small number of people could have the potentially worse damage, damaging impact to our, our citizens. Um, if you think about it another way, um, it's ten percent, uh, nine percent of the people in Jacksonville Beach are over seventy-five years of age. That's on the website for the virus. Um, I'm, I'm a young guy. I'm surfing, and I think, you know, I've got it all pretty much covered. You walk by Publix and you brush against somebody who's eighty years old. Uh, and you maybe don't have positive impact of the virus, but you're carrying part of the virus on you. These are things that we've been thinking about. This just came out today, or yesterday, one of the two, but it's, it's fascinating. There's a professor at the University of California, San Diego, her name's Kim Prather. She's a leading atmospheric chemist at Scripps Institution of Oceanography at the University of California. She's warning people to stay clear of the beach. The beach, in her estimation, is one of the most dangerous places to be these days. In her research, Prather has found that the ocean churns up all kinds of particulate and microscopic pathogens. And every time the ocean belts out a wave or two, it sprays the particles into the air. She believes that this new coronavirus is light enough that it'll float through the air much longer and much further than we think. The six-foot physical distance rule, she said, doesn't apply at the beach where the winds can put, uh, you know, quite, a strong wind can send viral particles snoring. Uh, that's brand-new type information that's come available. We need to do some, uh, kind of verification that's good information. But even if that's tru, if it's not true, it gives you an idea of what kind of possibilities exist, and why would we risk the health and safety of people for, uh, you know, just access to the beach? Uh, I don't mean to cannibalize access to the beach. I know it's very important to a lot of people. There's no question about that. But our bottom-line responsibility, once again, as elected officials, is to protect the public, period. Recreation, in my opinion, is probably a third or a fourth level priority behind fiscal management and, uh, uh, you know. People can still walk, jog, walk their dogs, bicycle without using the beach. Uh, relaxing our safety posture at this time could potentially raise the level of infected residents. We currently have twenty-five residents. We currently have 25 residents that have tested positive for the virus, which puts two employees of the City of Jacksonville Beach. And the worst case scenario, somebody could die. So why would we make this a priority? I know people are angry, but it just doesn't make sense as a public servant that we would potentially subject our residents to a tough situation. Tony Baselli, everybody knows Tony Baselli, one of the strongest and healthiest people in Jacksonville Beach, was in intensive care for five days with the virus. According to the reporter, he was minutes away from going to a ventilator. People that do a ventilator with respiratory disease have a high, are a low level of successful recovery. I mean, that's how dangerous it is. Prime Minister of Britain, the British Prime Minister yesterday was diagnosed with a virus and he was hospitalized. Today, he's in the ICU and they're questioning whether or not he's going to survive. Somebody saw this post on my Facebook page, I don't Facebook that much anymore, but Joe Diffie, who I've always been a big fan of, is a country singer, got sick on Friday of last week, went right into the hospital and he died Sunday. Sick, he's my age, he's 61 years old. You know, this is life and death we're talking about. This is a global pandemic, the likes that none of us have ever seen. We're responsible for our citizens to provide the safest possible environment and that's exactly what we're doing. Every decision that's been made so far is aligned with the governor and the president and those decisions have all been agreed unanimously with myself, Mayor Curry, Brandon Glasser. And we're going to continue to keep the beach closed until the dangerous pandemic has passed or at least until there's clear scientific evidence that it's safe for our citizens to go back. And that's our statement on the beach. I know it doesn't make a lot of people happy, you know, I'm sorry for that, but, you know, we all went through our training as council members and the pandemic, I must have missed that day. We're doing the best we can with what we've got. I want to offer my heartfelt thanks to all the people in the room, all the departments for the city, our city manager, we sure made a great choice there, well, our city attorney made a great choice there too. You guys have done a fantastic job. We still got a long way to go. I mean, this, we haven't even reached the apex yet. So, you know, please, if you have any questions, I know a couple of people had put on their Facebook page and I'm not really sure what's going on, not getting the information we need. If you feel that way, get with Mike, get with Chris, get the information, make sure you know that you're current with it so when people ask you, you know, you're talking from experience and direct knowledge, you understand what's going on.
Mayor, I just wanted to add that we did get a submission from Captain Rob from the Jacksonville Beach Ocean Rescue. He was asked to comment about keeping the beaches closed. If you'd like for me to read that?
Sure.
Approximately a paragraph or so from Captain Rob. So Captain Rob from Jacksonville Beach Ocean Rescue responds that he recommends keeping the beaches closed for any use, allowing uses as volusia and brevard, which were mentioned in earlier public comments. Allowing uses as volusia and brevard would bring very large crowds, which would be very difficult to manage. Some points that support Captain Rob's position. Opening the beaches for limited uses would require a crew of lifeguards and police to be on duty, increasing the risk of spread of the virus to our lifeguards and officers in their interactions with the public. Opening the beach for limited uses would be very difficult to monitor and enforce. Enforcing social distancing while opening the beach with any conditions or specific allowed uses would be very difficult. The current closure is being maintained and enforced effectively. Occasionally, people go on the beach, but when they're informed, they comply with little problem. Limited hours would mean making beachgoers leave and require, again, interaction with the lifeguards and officers with those who wanted to push the boundaries of the orders. Lifeguards and police would be forced to make judgments on how to strictly enforce particular times that the public would be allowed on the beach. The current status of it being closed is a clear and easy interpretation and easily, easy to enforce. Residents only would, a decision of allowing residents only on the beach would mean that the officers and the lifeguards would have to check the proof of residency of each person. And this would, again, lead to more frequent direct interaction and contact. Closed, the current policy of closed to all is being accomplished by the current presence of lifeguards and police and the police vehicles with no direct interaction between the officers and the lifeguards and the public. Captain Rob recommends that the visitors should know that it's their goal to protect them. It's the police and lifeguards' goal to protect them.
Thanks, Chris. And one last thing to edify what you mentioned and what Rob mentioned. You know, every time that we have a situation where we send the police out to enforce or check or whatever the case may be, we're exposing them to probably the people who care less about everybody else around them because they're pushing the limits. I know we've had a policy as a city and as a police force of educate, warn and then act. And my understanding is we've had one arrest, two arrests of people that didn't follow very friendly, polite introduction by our police department. Done a fantastic job as always with customer service. I'm very proud of all of you guys and gals. But I got to tell you, the beach is going to stay closed as far as City of Jacksonville Beach is concerned. And I've spoken with the other mayors today and they're also convinced that it's, yeah, there are a lot of people telling us about Volusia County and Brevard County, but, you know, we don't know what the circumstances are there and we don't know what they're going to look like after things peak in the next two weeks. You know, we can, I can sleep at night knowing that we're taking the stonestones possible position to make sure that we're protecting the safety of our citizens, period. So, does anybody have any questions or anything they want to bring up? Yes, ma'am.
Can you publish that statement? Can we put it out on social media or something like that?
Good idea.
We can all share it so we're all saying the exact...
Yep, sure. Yeah, I'll smooth it up and send it to you and you can put it as a note from the mayor.
You know, the idea, because I think people are seeing other counties and going, oh, maybe we've got a chance in Jacksonville Beach to compact it and you're saying they don't, so maybe that'll help.
Okay.
We can take it from the minutes for the recording if you'd like, we can...
I can also just send you the text and you can use it if you feel...
Mayor, I'll just add one last thing from my perspective is that, you know, all of the orders and health officials' guidance is to limit contact. We have the social distancing and to prevent the large gatherings. If the beaches were open, I can't possibly foresee how a limited lifeguard force and our already stretched and burdened police force would be able to possibly keep up with the thousands of people that would inevitably be engaging in that close encounter situation that all of the official orders and emergency orders and health officials' recommendations are trying to prevent. We can't expect GP to be able to keep his eye on every single person on the beach. It may be an interaction of 45 minutes or an hour before an officer or a lifeguard even discovers that that group has been socializing and that group has defeated the entire process that we're all trying to follow. So I, you know, GP's too proud to do the speaking, but I'm trying to speak for him. And I know how hard those commanders are working and I encounter them every day with what they're going through and I just can't imagine putting that burden on them. And again, the interactions, the face-to-face interactions, the exposure that our officers would have. If anyone's paid attention to the news, New York PB added hundreds of officers infected. Imagine if we had a couple, a dozen of our officers infected? How that would debilitate GP's ability to protect this community.
Thanks, Chris. Anybody else have questions or comments? Because I'm sure I'm just ready to go home. Okay, this one is adjourned. Thanks very much, have a great night.